And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, evening, everyone. We'll move us to our first public comment. Does there any public comments this evening? I don't have any slips, but that's okay. Hearing none. We shall move right into presentations in the honorable Matthew Stewart, prosecuting attorney, Dean of Finnegam, who is going to give us a presentation on Pleasant View.
Along with defense attorney Matt.
What's your name?
No, it's Adam.
I thought maybe you're bowing out.
No, never, never. Judge, you go first.
Yeah, before we put the material before the board, you know, I'd ask a rhetorical question to all of you, including the clerk and Patty here, is the question is this, do we have a drug problem in our community? Do we have, do we have drug problems? The answer is a resounding yes, we do. Today, 145 people will die of drug overdose. 145 people. More people die from drug overdoses now than people die from gunshot wounds. More people die today from drug overdoses than they do from car accidents. That's right. This year, 200,000 people will use heroin for the first time. 200,000 people. It's amazing. Do you know how many people are in the state of Michigan? We've got about 11 million people, right? Well, guess what? Last year, doctors prescribed over 12 million prescriptions for opiates. How? How can doctors prescribe more opiates than there are people? That means every single person in the state of Michigan can have a little bottle of pills. Over 365 million prescriptions in the country last year. Last census has us at about 350 million people. So, yeah, we got a problem. We got a problem. And we're all doing our part. You know, we've got Drug Court, and I've got great news on that front. For 2018, Drug Court received $132,000 in grant money. Which brings our total, since Drug Court started, to $250,000 in grant money. And that's money this county had never had, and that's money that will be used to treat Chiawassee County addicts. So, we're doing our part. That's like a grain of sand on the beach, though, folks. That ain't enough. That's just a small sliver, a small representation of our population. And that's in the criminal court, in which over three-quarters of my criminal matters touch and concern drugs. Can you believe that? Three-quarters of them. So, yeah, we got a drug problem, and I'd just like to set the table for what we plan to do about it on a larger scale. Dean.
Thank you. We know that Pleasant View is going to be closing soon. And in speaking with some of the folks up there at Pleasant View, they look to be moving to the new facility sometime in December or January. And the question becomes, okay, what happens to the old facility? Well, we know, under its original deed, it reverts back to the city of Corona. And what's Corona going to do with it? If Pleasant View is used as a medical care facility or a drug rehabilitation program, the county can retain ownership of it. There were a group of us that went up there last week to take a look and see if Pleasant View could meet the needs of not only Chiawassee County, but other counties as a place for a drug rehabilitation center, a medical care facility. And it's a resounding yes, it can. We had questions about, well, has asbestos been abated? It has. Is the kitchen adequate? It is. Are the doors secure? They are. And it has huge dining rooms, it has stations, nurse stations on every wing with locked facilities for medication. It can work. It could work, and it could serve not only Chiawassee County, but I foresee that it could serve Saginaw County, Livingston County, Ingham County. And we could rent the beds out. The bottom line, of course, is, is what's this going to cost Chiawassee County? And when we look at statistics at people that can use this kind of facility, to give you an idea, when I took office in 2013, to the present, so just in a little over four years, 8,356 cases were authorized in my office involving drugs of some kind. We have, I take that back, 8,356 felony cases authorized, over 1,600 directly involved drugs. Three of delivery of controlled substances causing death. 14 medical marijuana violations, and that's just, that's piddly stuff in comparison. 197 cases involving the purchase of Sudafedrine for the manufacture of methamphetamine. 25 ephedrine, Sudafedrine cases where others are soliciting folks to purchase it, to manufacture methamphetamine. When we look at these numbers, we have to understand that, as Judge has told you, there's a need, and it's right here, and it's right now. Our Drug Court can't treat everybody. It's not designed for that. Yeah, we have, what, 18 participants right now? Some more coming down the pipe. We're not equipped to handle that. We send people to other counties to get their initial treatment. It can be done right here in Chiawassee County with a facility that is already up to code, up to standard, and that we can use. In speaking with Recovery Pathways, who would take an active part in helping us run a rehabilitation program here, we can get $348 a day reimbursement from Midstate Health Network. These are the folk, for the folks that are on Medicaid, insurance that need this, there's a pot of money right here for folks that need medically monitored, and they do need medically monitored, residential detox programs. So, before we shut the door on Pleasant View, I ask the board to consider other possibilities before we turn it over. I would hate to say, I don't know what the city plans, and obviously, it's a little premature to go to the city until this board says, maybe there's something we can do with Pleasant View besides turn it back over to the city of Corona. So, I don't know what the plans are for Pleasant View and the city's end. I imagine it will either, one, be sold to a private nursing care facility to be used as such, and that way it would generate some tax revenue, or it'll be dozed down and it will be sold to develop other private industry or to use for residential areas or whatever. But we have a good facility, a good solid facility, that we can use to not only bring money into this community, to rehabilitate our addicted population, and also to bring some more jobs into Chiawassee County. Because you're going to have to have nursing staff, you're going to have to have doctors to monitor this, and those things could all come, and then you'll also have the ability to do private pay, not just midstate for the folks that don't have it, because wealthy people get addicted too. Wealthy people get addicted, and they need rehab. And we can have private pay facility as well. So, we're asking that, before we close the door on Pleasant View, you consider some possibilities. And I said, this is really early in the works. We just looked at it Friday, Matt?
Friday afternoon.
Yeah. So, if you need something more substantial as a proposal, if you're willing to consider it, we can do that. And we can get the folks from Recovery Pathways, they went with us, Matt, Larry Johnson went and looked at the kitchen, made sure that those facilities worked. Yeah, Tim Hill from Buildings and Grounds said the building is solid, so it got a good, you know, heating, cooling systems, all those things.
All IT, it's, you know, hardwired for...
All hardwired. There are a lot of...
It's a medical facility, yeah. So, it's hardwired to be a medical facility, state of the art, so...
It has possibilities, and we'd like to see views for that.
Okay, so obviously, does rehab center, do they have any different phases, people that are locked in there for 30 days or 60 days, whatever? Ballpark me the number of people that could be on the mend but need a safe place or a drug-free place to live that could be out working. How many?
That's a pot, it's 100, right, it's 135-bed facility. You could, you know, what I foresee is you have sort of an alternative housing for folks that maybe don't have a solid place to go, need treatment, but have jobs. And the way it's set up, it's perfect for that, because there are wings. You know, you can have a wing for folks that are using it as temporary housing until they're on...
Do you guys have any, like, I love numbers on beds, like, you'd split it half and half, or is it just going, well, the market's going to dictate whatever it is?
Well, I think you have to have separate wings for men and women. That's one issue. And then there's also, if you have temporary housing, obviously, that has to be divided.
Commissioner McMaster, you brought up a really good point. We've had to turn people away from the Drug Court program because they had no stable housing. So, they went to the Department of Corrections because they had no resources, and we had no resources to offer. Matt will tell you what happens when somebody goes to the Michigan Department of Corrections.
Right. If, they'll get worse. That's what will happen, is they'll become better criminals, they'll become more addicted, they'll find other substances and other people that can help them get it, and they'll network that way. We want them to network the other way. That's the whole point of, you know, the specialty courts that Judge Stewart and Dean are involved in as well. The biggest problem we find is anybody coming out of avoiding the Department of Corrections, because that's the trend, right? I mean, right now, the federal money, the state money is to avoid incarcerating somebody. How many, 30-some thousand dollars a year per head?
$29,000 a year.
To house somebody in the Department of Corrections. So, they want that money to go elsewhere. And this, it's going to programs like these, and what we don't want to see Chiawassee County not have an opportunity to get this, to be a cutting-edge county when it comes to that kind of thing. Because this county, as any county around us, has the very same problem, that is this drug epidemic, pandemic. And so, what happens is, is we get folks that are coming off with very serious charges, and guess what? Their families have nothing to do with them anymore. Their, they don't have, their wife, their mother, their father, they're disowned, and they don't have a place to go. Right now, they might go to the CPI program, which is an inpatient program through the Department of Corrections, but again, that's...
Potent.
Potent. Long ways away. Any support they can start getting is gone. And it's just not helpful. And most of the people that we see that enter our treatment court system that are successful, and ones that are guiding their way through this successfully, are the ones that have some time in an inpatient facility, in substantial time. And we're talking three months.
And resources to help them when they get out, a place to live.
And this is the type of facility that would be able to provide that. And to talk about the different wings, and, you know, one of the things that we talked about too, we have Marlon Webster from Chiawassee Hope who comes in and points out that we don't have a facility or a place where people can go and congregate in a sober environment. You know, there's not a, you know, you don't go to the bowling alley if you're in recovery. You don't go to a golf league. You don't go to the par if you're in recovery. You don't do those things. And so, this is a place that, you know, they've got large conference rooms, large common areas, that people that are in recovery can gather and hold groups and things like that, and be together and help each other in their recovery, and that's why this facility is so great.
Commissioner, you have a question?
Yeah, I think it's quite a lot for the county to take over, but is there any places, some groups or something, that some nonprofit groups or something that would run that, and we could just help keep the building up or something? I mean, something like a lot to hire somebody for the county to take over or something like that?
Well, it would be...
I mean, it's just modern, modern.
Well, it would be similar to how Pleasant View is run.
Yeah, if that was all independent.
It is. But the county has the building. And I think you could. For example, Recovery Pathways, I think, would be very interested in being...
Well, that's what I meant, yes.
...the medical care providers for such a facility. When you look at, what's it, employs over 200 people? Pleasant View employs as many people as the rest of Chiawassee County. I mean, it's huge. But you don't need that type of intensive care for the addicted population that would be treated there. You don't have to have physical therapy, you don't have to have those types of things. So, it's beautifully suited for that. I mean, it, I was, it's been years since I'd been up to Pleasant View. I was pleasantly surprised at the condition of the building and what they had to... Oh, she did, yeah. This is Kimber Devolak, she is from Recovery Pathways, and she was with us. Come on up. She was with us when we took a tour of the facility last week. And I think she could tell you more about what Recovery Pathways could offer as far as helping make this a reality.
Kimber, just as a preface, is, you know, one of the questions that Commissioner Holzhausen asked, is like, they don't want to get involved in running this thing. It seems like a pretty heavy burden for the commissioners and the county to do. What can Recovery Pathways do to L.A.'s with that?
Kimber is the manager of Recovery Pathways.
Correct.
And then so...
So, I, what we did when we toured the facility is looked at its feasibility for a recovery house. It's obviously a large facility, so we could see this more as a consortium. We could see that we would have something like perhaps Chiawassee Hope engaged in there, some services for folks who are needing help with transportation, with housing, with food, with clothing. It could kind of be an all-encompassing, one-stop shopping. There's also, as far as Recovery Pathways goes, and what we could bring for that, for recovery housing and for recovery services right now, if you call today and you have a friend or relative of yourself that needs to go someplace for residential or detox treatment, where they can be monitored medically and get themselves stabilized, you can wait two to three weeks. So, when you have the desire and the need right now, there isn't a place for you to go. There's lots of reasons for that. So, what could this facility be? This could be beds for residential and detox, for folks who are trying to get their lives drained out. They could be medically monitored to get them through the initial phases of withdrawal, stabilize them, and continue services on the outpatient level. I could see this facility having everything from that beginning, tenuous first couple of days of monitoring, all the way through stabilization, staying there for transitional housing, and then get you reestablished back in the community. So, the facility has great potential to do all that and then some. Would be wonderful to host some meetings in there and to bring in some of the other 51(c)(3) corporations that need places to have meeting space or need access to other facilities. So, I could see it doing all of that, again, like I say, and then some. But at least giving people from this county and also the surrounding counties places to go for that initial treatment phase. We work with what's called, there's a lot of acronyms, PIHPs or health plans, of which we work with Midstate Health Network. They would be the primary funding source. So, they would be covering those folks. They serve 21 counties currently, all around this area, and they would be the funding resource for folks that need to come in and have treatment. So, as far as running it, that would be the burden on my group, and the funding would come from private insurance patients and Midstate Health Network-funded patients. So, that's the initial synopsis.
That's what I would... We could help, maybe, help maintain some of the buildings and something like that.
Commissioner McMaster.
So, it's possible, so in Livingston, there's a lot of Al-Anon groups that have their own facility.
Yes, yes.
And so, and like, I know one of the more refined, early wash cars, you can take your car there, get it washed, and it keeps everybody busy, and that's, that would be possible then, that this place, we could have other groups have AA meetings or an Al-Anon group.
I think that's how it works best, where you have that whole umbrella of features in one-stop shopping. So, yes, absolutely.
Folks, it's going to take something like this to get a handle on substance abuse in this county. It's going to take something big to counter something big. You know, we can, we can move along with Drug Court, we have other treatment programs, and Matt, Dean will continue to do their job, and Kimber will too, and we'll do a fine job. And we'll make as much a difference as we can with what we have. But unless we answer, unless we answer this call, it's not going to make a big difference.
Just to piggyback on Commissioner Holzhausen's question, I mean, I hear the assistance and I hear the variety of programs that could be run by a variety of different agencies. That's nice. Somebody has to oversee it. Have you thought through what department? Would it be Public Health? Would it be Community Mental Health? Would it be a whole new department developed? Have you thought through that? And do you have suggestions as to who would oversee the program, which is what I think you were asking more? I don't doubt, there's no doubt in my mind, we need the program. There's no doubt in my mind, there's a lot of services out there. But is there any one service out there that wants to oversee the whole project, or is that something that you guys have thought through a little bit?
We think about, you look at the model that Pleasant View has with its own board, that's what I would foresee, that this would have its own board of directors. But it would be, for example, I think Recovery Pathways could take over this and bring in all of the other programs that we could house there.
As far as board of directors, the current way that we work already is we have members of Community Mental Health involved. We have members from the medical community involved. We already have sort of our own loosely formed, that could just be translated there. So, it would be this input, because I foresee Health Department, Community Mental Health can have outreach services there, can bring things down there. So, it's a collaborative approach where we all work together to serve the same client for their best needs.
Commissioner, I asked you about the viewing of the forest today. Sounds like a great opportunity, and certainly there's a demonstrated need. I'm just curious, what's the current age of the building?
Building was built in 1951, so it's, you know, it's 66 years old. But what I notice is that in the past probably 15, 20 years, there's been a lot of money put into Pleasant View. It was impressive when you see like the boiler system and stuff. This stuff is new. It's not antiquated. And the one thing Larry Johnson was concerned about was asbestos abatement. It's all been taken care of. That's been done. So, those were the big issues, you know, was it structurally sound? And according to Tim, it is structurally sound.
Do we have a fix on the annual maintenance currently, of what it takes to keep that facility open?
I don't know, I don't have the figures. I'm sure it's not, it's not cheap. They have a maintenance group, there was, what's there?
Four.
Four or five, yeah. Four or five that work there that maintain that building. I mean, they have a huge shop. I mean, it was, it's all pretty impressive, what they have up there.
It's like a little city.
Yeah, it's like a little city, you know? They have Lola's Cafe, and they've got cafeterias, and they have a little...
Common areas.
Common areas, and a whole wing that's devoted to crafts and a small theater and things like, I mean, they've got a lot there that would suit our needs.
Is there a, are you aware, is there a comparable facility in another county in the state that this might emulate?
Speak to that, Pastor.
Yes, yes.
As far as, there's similar facilities, not exactly comparable, because this is a much more ambitious, bring the whole house under one roof, so to speak. But there's different facilities we do work with. There's Carols in Saginaw County has somewhat of a similar, where they serve women, adolescent males and females under one umbrella. It's actually an old Catholic retreat that was converted over. So, that's sort of a similar model cafeteria style and whole bit. There's other treatment facilities like that. This one would be different in the fact that it brings in all those community components that we would really like to see when we're rehabilitating folks to go back out utilizing the services that we currently provide and then retraining. It's a great employment opportunity for folks just getting on their feet, too. So, it could be that whole thing. So, there are other treatment facilities that do this very similar thing as far as residential and detox, and some of those community services, maybe not quite on such a large scale, at least not here, down Detroit area, they're awesome.
It's very ambitious, I think. You mentioned a figure, $348 a day per person for reimbursement, and that's somebody that's admitted, presumably admitted by their doctor for treatment, or then you have outpatient... I'm just trying to get a better fix on where potential revenue streams are to support individuals that need this kind of treatment.
Sure. That's that initial revenue stream right there that would cover it for the treatment for the people that are there, and then that would cover the daily bed usage and staff fees, that's what's all rolled into that bundle. The idea of this building being so large and having other services in there would be you could suplet essentially to other people like Chiawassee Hope or something similar to that, so that they bring in, okay, here's how we're going to help people with housing and transportation. There's the ability to have those other services there with that feature as well. One of the meeting rooms that were there, you know, we're always looking for meeting rooms just to have for general discussion purposes. You can, you could rent out the reading, meeting room there as well. But as far as the bed coverage, typically, a stay would be 21 to 28 days. Outpatient services would continue thereafter, still could be housed under the same roof, and still would be funded through the same revenue stream. So, that's a continuous stream for folks that stay. Again, the current contract that we have services through 21 counties. We haven't even touched any other counties other than those 21. So, there's potential for more contractual work, for folks to come in for the 21-day stay, return to their county for outpatient, but that initially fills your beds and continues that rollover.
So, I guess just finally, what would you see as the next steps, and what would you like from the commission?
I think the next step is to see if the commissioners are interested in putting this forward, and then I think between this group and some other folks that we've worked with, come up with a plan to give you some firm facts and figures, and then meet with the city of Corona. Because the city of Corona may say, as far as we're concerned, this is our medical care facility, and we want our building back. I don't know. But I think if the board of commissioners agrees that this is something county wants to do, that we want to go forward with this, then we can look at everything else that needs to be done. We don't want to get the cart before the horse and say, well, we're going to do this, this, and this, and have the commissioners saying, now, this really isn't feasible for Chiawassee County. We think it is, and we think it's something we desperately need. And rather than send our addicted offenders other places, let's keep them home. And frankly, I want, I'd rather have an addicted offender getting treatment here in my county than not getting treatment and breaking into my house to support their habit. It makes Chiawassee County a safer place if we have people getting the treatment they need and having it available. So, right now, it's not always available.
Meeting concept is certainly seems, you know, very attractive, at least from my perspective. I won't speak to the others, but I guess with short of having a business plan, it's kind of hard to evaluate what's being proposed, so maybe that's a logical, and that's some kind of feasibility or a business plan to be able to evaluate just how this thing might be able to work. And if that requires some resources to hire a contractor to assist in fleshing out a business plan, you know, maybe that's something we'll need to consider. But based on the success of the Drug Court, Judge Stewart's great work there, and yours and the others, and the other things we've seen, clearly, there's an interest.
Chairman Root.
Yeah, I think I would be supportive of it as far as wanting to commit now the worst, that I, I don't know what the rest, we may, we take a little poll here to see, but I definitely would like to get to that next stage to see the plan.
Okay.
To see what we can come up with, see what we can put together, and then have that all kind of put together in front of us, so we can go over that, too, a little more in depth.
That's all we're asking for. Just give us permission to take the next step. Commissioner Holzhausen.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern, something to run, expenses to keep the places open. You're talking about too many dollars to keep it open, and so, you're going to get a couple hundred thousand to run it. I mean, I might be able to do it, but I'm concerned about it, so...
And I can understand it.
I don't think it's up to us to hire people to run it and, you know, put them on our payroll and all that. It can be too much for us to look at right now. That's just my opinion.
We'll come back with more information.
Okay.
I'm really interested, obviously, from a treatment standpoint, but also economically, because we have, especially if Project 10 comes through here, you know, and I know a lot of our other employees in town, it's not that we don't have people, you know, it's not that we don't have people with skills, we don't have enough people that can pass the drug tests. And it'd be a shame to have a huge employer go into the drained area and our residents can't pass the drug test to work at a plant that big. So, I'd be supportive of moving ahead and figuring out what to do. Check and see what we have to do with Corona, or, you know, get them locked down so we don't, we don't need a 15, 30-day gap.
Well, we'll have a, we'll have a tough negotiation with Joe Sawyer, because he's coming after that property from already negotiating with him on it a little bit. He's got a plan. Yes, time is, I think we need to move.
Quickly. Because like I said, I had a hate for all of a sudden, you have this window where we don't have our stuff together, they're moved out of there, and this is a lot vacant and it's ours.
Yes. Make your mark.
Yeah, I think Judge Stewart made a good comment when he said, you know, just think about the one question, do we have a drug problem? And the answer is, yes, we do. And I follow very closely, but to my understanding, that there's even a county in Ohio now, where it's not no longer epidemic level, but they've reached pandemic levels of people OD. We have got to do something about this, is the question. So, the question would be, let's take a look at the money. Let's see where we are. What does it cost to insure the facility for a year that it's going to be on the county? What does it cost for total yearly maintenance? Those kind of things, put those numbers together, it's a lot easier for us, because that's really what we do, is just manage the money. Let's look at the money. That's all we're asking.
I think we're pretty unanimous on this, but we can't, can't drag our feet for sure.
No, that's true.
We need some quick numbers.
Do you know how soon they're going to be out of that building?
When we were there, he said, what, in December?
Just before Christmas is what their plan was, whether or not they'll hold up, it's hard to say, but it sounded like they were moving faster than they initially thought. So, we believe, there's no short, the four of us, we have no shortage of things to do. And so, the reason that we're here today, as you can see, so the reason that we're here today is because we believe in this, and we know that you folks do, too, now. And so, because of that, that gives us an opportunity to go to the people that are, that
of that, that gives us an opportunity to go to the people that are, that, that do have those answers, the numbers that we need, and so that we can all get together, put our brains together and plan and make sense for a cause that we really, really deeply believe in. So, that's why we're here today. We will, if you know any of us very well, we don't really shuffle our feet at all. So, we'll get it done.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much.
I was just gonna make a final comment. I think you guys are like an all-star team. And if we had a team that could put this together, we could get something done to really help the county.
This is an all-star team.
You guys are it.
These are the best. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
We'll see you in the morning. It's a great early morning.
All right, let's move on. Evening Physical Development, Commissioner Coscarelli.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to consider approving Form LDA 4029, establishing the village that the county intends to levy for 2017, and authorize the board chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second, motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
In item B, I move to consider approving resolution number 17-09-18, supporting total opposition to any reduction or elimination of federal funding for the Greatness Restoration Initiative. This requested by the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, and authorize the board chair to sign all necessary documents.
So, we're, and motion and support. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Coscarelli. County Finance and Administration, Commissioner Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to consider authorizing Chiwasi County Central Dispatch to purchase the PBX equipment and services to connect to the county phone system through SunTel Services in the amount of $9,371.96, to be paid from line item 216-325-970.000, and authorize Lieutenant Batkov to sign all necessary documents.
Second, we have motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
I move to consider authorizing Chiwasi County to purchase a 16-base storage array server from PG Pit Stop in the amount of $9,600.18, to be paid from line item number 101-258-804.001, and authorize the board chair to sign all necessary documents.
Support. We have motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
And finally, I move to consider authorizing Chiwasi County to renew a three-year contract with SOFO's endpoint protection, Android's protections for desktops and servers, in the amount of $6,891.20, to be paid from line item number 101-258-804.002, and authorize the board chair to sign all necessary documents.
We have motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks. Commissioner Barts, Commissioner Burt, we have no titles. So, we move on to Health and Human Services, Commissioner McMaster.
I move to consider approving the MSU Extension 2017 proclamation.
Support. We have motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
Hey, I move to consider authorizing the Health Department to enter into a grant agreement between the Michigan Primary Care Association and the Chiwasi County Health Department for the Grand School Wellness Program, Child and Adolescent Health Center, in the amount of $150,000 for the period of October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018, and authorize Larry Johnson Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Second, motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
I move to consider the Health Department to contract with the Huron County Health Department for sustaining community-based immunization action projects in the amount of $18,184 for the period of August 1st, 2017, to July 31st, 2018, and authorize Larry Johnson Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Second, motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
I move to consider authorizing the Health Department to contract with Heather Minkie for international board-certified lactation consultant services in the amount of $37 per hour, for the period of October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018, and authorize Larry Johnson Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Second, motion and support. Any further discussion or questions?
One question, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm just curious, it gives an hourly rate, but is there a total contract amount?
No, this is a, this is a as-needed basis. At this point, they're in the process of training, oh, Larry's
Sorry, committee meetings.
I didn't, I didn't know you were here.
It just as needed. It's not like a 40-hour-a-week job. It's a, it's on an as-needed basis. It's a part of the Women Infant Children Program, which is a federal program. And the feds put a mandate that each department that runs a WIC program has to have one of these certified lactation consultants. The, the problem with it is the mandate takes effect October 1st, and there's very few of them that currently have that certification in the state. So, the Department, Health Departments are scrambling to contract and get their people trained, which we are doing. We are training one of our current employees. But it's basically one year, almost college-type credits to get this certification, and she probably won't be ready until at least April. So, in the meantime, as needed, if we have a WIC client that is having a problem with breastfeeding to an advanced degree, we consult with this person to help.
I see. So, a year from now, we'll have somebody on staff that's certified to perform that function. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
I move to consider authorizing the Health Department to hire a hearing and vision technician to refill a vacancy at the Service Employees International Union SEIU Health Technical Clerical Level 5, with a salary range of $22,951.11 to $28,177.14.
Second, motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. Motion moves forward.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. And brings us to Chairperson, Commissioner Ford, Chairman Herr Lott. He has absolutely nothing. All right, other agenda items, any other agenda items that were not on the agenda that you would like to discuss? Hearing none. It's just to our public comments, and I do have one here. Mr. Shepherd would like to comment on Pleasant View.
Well, in regards to Pleasant View, I spoke with City Manager Joe Sawyer a few months ago, in regards to what was going to happen with Pleasant View, once it was turned back over to the city. And he indicated that it would be sold to the highest bidder, of course. City Manager's gonna try to make as much money as he can for the city. There's a Senate Bill 1100 was passed in 2016 to facilitate more veterans' facilities across the state. We have two, one in Marquette and one in Grand Rapids, and really nothing else in between, other than hospitals that take, take on like Saginaw or Ann Arbor. But nothing dedicated just to the hospitalization of veterans that are disabled or, or in need of hospitalization, full-time, with dementia or Alzheimer's or other disability effects. And there's grant money that's available. What they want is more smaller facilities like this, you know, 140, 170-bed facilities. This is set up right now at 135 beds, and it can be reconfigured to 159 beds, easily taking in the Drug Corps people if they're only got 20 people in a class or whatever they have going. The rest could be utilized to take in care of the veterans and their needs. I can get you more information.
What did you say the bill, the bill number on that was?
Senate Bill 1100.
And that was in 2016?
Probably January, February, January 12th. Representative Wentworth was the individual I spoke with. He's the committee, Veterans Committee Head or Chairman of the State House.
So, okay, yeah. Mr. Shepherd, so are you, are you suggesting that this might also serve as veterans in addition to serving the drug needs, you know, drug treatment needs?
I don't know just how many veterans are in need in this county to be hospitalized full-time. But I'm sure Bill Archer might give some better numbers on that. But surely one wing could be dedicated to helping restore the people that are in addictive type behaviors.
Something I may suggest, might suggest to that is to talk with this presentation group and
I, I spoke briefly with Matt.
So, that they're aware that may be a financial or a service that could be provided. Maybe they could set aside five beds, or 10 beds, or whatever, for that specific group. They would be a good group to put the bug in here.
There was only one stipulation that does not meet with ADA standards, in that, I think it's the North Wing, just a couple inches short for ADA standards. That way, two old veterans can't be dragged racing down the hallway. But I imagine they could look the other, other way. Or utilize, say, that wing or the drug rehabilitation program, the rest of the facility for taking care of veterans.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody, anybody at all? Okay, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.